Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the CRB City Council Joint Session. And now I will turn it over to, will we be starting with City Council first? Or what would be our particular agenda be?
No, we're just, I mean-
Just here?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're here.
So what would you like to do, Ms. Sarah?
Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Sarah Burke, a member of the CRB. We were gonna do sort of a brief introduction of the work that we've done over the past few months, the community needs that we've heard, and then get into a bit of a sort of flowchart of the process that we foresee sharing with you all. So I think, Rosia, you were gonna talk a little bit about the community needs?
As again I say, good afternoon, City Council. Thank y'all for taking your time out to, you know, come in and to listen to the procedures of the bylaws for us. As you know, this was a resolution that was presented to the CRB from City Council on part of the devastation that took place in 2017. So I think that this would be good bylaws to look at for Charlottesville and for the city, the citizens of Charlottesville, because I believe that this speaks to everything that we've been trying to speak upon over the years and actually make the police department accountable. But I really do hope that y'all really do really pay attention to what the bylaws are saying and really work with us in transparency and making this happen.
Ms. Gloria, did you want to add anything about some of the needs of the-
Well, I really think these bylaws are great, and we've really been putting ourselves into these bylaws. And City Council gave us a charge, and we went wholeheartedly. We came into this not knowing what to do, at least I didn't. I've learned a lot since then, and I do want to make our city much better. And we need transparency and unity between the citizens of Charlottesville and the police force, because it's awful when people say, "We don't trust the police," and that's not good, because who are you supposed to call on in a time of need? So I hope these bylaws are accepted, and it makes a difference for this community.
Okay. So as Rosia pointed out, we are serving as an advisory board, and our hope tonight is to present to you the work that we've done over the past, you know, eight and a half months to develop a mission, propose membership, do the research, incorporate best practices from across the country, and really create an effective oversight model. We started by learning about best practices in the field of police oversight, and the biggest takeaway that we learned was that there really is no one best practice. It's really dependent on what the community needs. There are, I don't think there are two models in the country that are identical. In fact, we've researched over 120 that seem to be fairly similar to the needs to, in communities that were similar to the needs that have been expressed by our community, and amongst those 120, there weren't two that were alike. We've gone through the resolution pretty frequently in our meetings and individually to make sure that what we've done has actually addressed all of the needs of the resolution in terms of defining and developing a cooperative structure for the board, trying to develop police procedures for reviewing police matters. Amongst those that were listed were investigative detention reports, use of force incidents, the complaint process, and the Internal Affairs appeals. And as we've done that, we've realized that while we have been asked to create bylaws for a review board, that's just one part of oversight. And what we've been asked by the community, and in part by the resolution, is to look almost more sort of comprehensively at the issues that this community faces. And the fact that the resolution points to not only the complaint process, which is what most people think of when they think of a review board, it also points to investigative detention reports, use of force reports, which is really much more of a sort of long-lasting, or a longer scope of review of systemically how things are working in this community in terms of police-community relationships. And we think that what we've developed is something that might take some time to implement in its full capacity. We're thinking that this is an iterative process that will, you know, most boards take, I think the average is about five to seven years from inception to sort of function, high-function. Some take upwards of 15 to 20 years, which we certainly hope that won't happen here. But what we see is, you know, in a short period of time, we've been asked to kind of create an oversight mechanism for a body within the Charlottesville city that is relatively close-booked. And so what we hope to do is get that process rolling and have a first step toward a longer-term goal that I think we have in this community toward a safer, a safer community, one where there's better relationships between the police and the community, and more equitable policing. So what we're hoping is that this can be a working session where we share information with you, and you ask questions of us as you have them. We have a sort of a brief overview of what we're hoping to do is, Guillermo's gonna talk a little bit about what we've done in the day-to-day as our work has developed. We'll talk a little bit about what the community has asked from us, and then we'll present to you what we see as sort of our oversight overview model, which is a three-armed approach. One civilian review board with the staffed executive director, one staff police auditor who's looking at longer-term trends and goals, longer-term trends, and then an outreach and engagement arm that's actively engaging the community and the police department, done by both the civilian review board and the police auditor arm.
I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
You've kind of mentioned that it takes kind of a transition point to get to what's being proposed for the board itself. Do you think that is true also of the staff that's being requested here? Or do you-
I think so. I mean, our understanding, I mean, we would, we know that what we're going to be asking for is expensive and will be at least two staffed positions. The idea that those people would be on board by, you know, the time the next CRB board is formed is probably pretty unlikely. But I think figuring out a way that we can work with you all to figure out how to insert those positions in as it becomes feasible in the budget is our goal.
I think one of the things, and Sarah said this already, that we heard from NACOL is the five-to-seven-year timeline that most boards take to implement, and we've been working on this for eight and a half months. So in a lot of ways, our job is to create the structure for the next board that's coming up. And at least for me, I see that board as step one in what's gonna be a many-step process to get to what we think is effective oversight for Charlottesville. We're just step zero, and so I think it's gonna take a while for all of these things to implement, at least to some degree.
Although, I would add that, you know, one thing we heard from NACOL is, you know, the notion that this is an iterative process, and we're gonna be somewhat evolutionary and organically it will grow, and it may take different directions from what we have in the bylaws, which is why the bylaws permit obviously amendments. But it, we need to work hard and commit to this now. It can't be that, oh, if five to seven years is the average timeline between inception and full realization, this is not something we need to worry much about until three and a half, four years in. The time to get this off the ground is now. But to the extent that not every piece can lift off immediately, that's understood.
So I'll-
I'll wait.
Okay. So I'll go over a couple of things real quick, and then we'll get started with some of the visuals that we've prepared for you.
They're up here, just people know.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's a good, yeah.
If anybody wants a copy of what we're gonna be putting on the overhead projector, there's a set of them up there. Feel free.
Yeah, I think everybody up here already has a copy, so that's, the stack up here is for the public.
And we'll just, I'll just go through what's in that stack, just so that everybody knows. There's a sort of a visual flowchart of what we could see this looking like, some staff position job details that's supposed, should be helpful for everybody to have a sense of what we expect those staff members to be. There's a budget memo that Josh prepared that accumulates a number of different cities that have oversight bodies and to determine what appropriate budget would be. And then there's a, I would call, very incomplete working draft of our bylaws. A lot of what we're going to be working on very hard in the next two weeks, I think, will be dependent on this meeting, what powers need to be written into these bylaws. So we've kind of hit a stopping point there.
And when is your next meeting? Just because I just want to manage expectations about how much we're gonna determine decide tonight, 'cause I think we're gonna have to have a huddle also after this meeting-
Right.
Yeah.
And kind of digest even further based on the conversation. So you guys are on for next Tuesday, or one more week?
Next Tuesday at 6:30 is our next meeting.
Okay.
We're on for next Tuesday, and we don't want to rush City Council, obviously, but at the same time, we also have a special meeting for the third, special set of meetings for the 31st and the 1st to do a sort of line-by-line review of our entire bylaws, and then hopefully by the 1st, vote on those bylaws to keep within the calendar that was given to us by City Council and by virtue of our appointment. So while we're not meeting again till next Tuesday, if you all, and you can only do what you can do, but if you all can reach, if you reach a resolution before then, I mean, we plan to do work between now and then, so-
And those special meetings are on May 30th and the 1st.
Yeah, so we'll be meeting Tuesday, the 23rd, at 6:30 here in City Council chambers.
You said the 31st.
31st.
Ah, it doesn't exist.
We'll be meeting on April 30th from 1 to 5, for whoever that sounds fun for, on April 30th in City Council chambers. And then if we need to, we're meeting from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the basement of City Hall on Wednesday, May 1st, to finalize any voting that needs to be done so that we can get our draft of bylaws.
So the very latest, ample time ahead of the April 30th, so say a week prior-
I would say even, I mean, we're-
We're already there.
We're there. I mean, so anytime next week is ideal, because since we'll be trying to vote on the actual language on the 30th, we have to have it drafted up by the 30th.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could talk about, you know, a week's extension of time or something like that, if that makes sense for you all, and if that is what you all need for your schedules, but that would just be by your, you know, your request.
Before we leave tonight, let's just be all aligned on this.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And just for the board's clarification, I have a hard stop at 7:30. I have a date with my daughter, so I won't be missing that, so I'll be scooting out there.
Okay, thank you.
A worthwhile endeavor.
Yeah.
So one thing we wanted to cover real quick was, even the people who are following this process along closely, they see us meeting every two weeks, 'cause they're open to the public, but what they don't really see is all the work that happens in between those two weeks, 'cause in a lot of ways, the meat of the work that happens is in between those meetings. And so in the last eight and a half months, like I said, we've met every two weeks as a board. We've done at least some level of research into about 120 of the boards across the country. The organization that we've been referring to, NACOL, is sort of the national oversight organization that works with these boards across the country, and we've been working closely with them in terms, to do this research. They came in and did an eight-hour training session for us. We've had numerous conversations with other boards across the country in terms of emails and phone calls. We've had community input at all of the meetings, and we're tracking community concerns. We've had dozens and dozens of conversations and meetings with city staff, and then with other interested people in the city. We've done some independent research on possible legal hurdles, and that's sort of the work we've done for the past eight and a half months that gets us to the point where we are right now.
So in terms of what we've heard from the community, there's been a request for some investigative element to this board, which has, there are some legal hurdles that we think we've navigated with our proposal. There's been a real desire for a well-represented board that are, that's represented by community members who are from areas and populations that have experienced disparate policing in Charlottesville. There's a desire for subpoena power, which we recognize has some limitations legally. A desire for disciplinary authority similarly have some legal limitations, but we've sort of tried to write in what we think is the strongest language for both subpoena power and disciplinary authority, which of course we'll go through with the city attorney when the time comes. The desire for a better complaint investigation and outcome process, there's been a lot of frustration expressed to us about the complaint process and about the investigation and communication from the police department. Desire for improved transparency about policing, including access to data, that's been a big issue since we've been impaneled. And the desire for accountability of CPD has any, does any wrongdoing of any kind. There's a feeling that that does not currently exist in this community in the way that the community would like, especially in a transparent way. So what we've proposed is, based on that, based on the model, the resolution, we've come up with this oversight model, which we can turn on whenever. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start on this. So what we're gonna be going over today, and we don't want to be sitting here presenting, we want lots of questions from City Councilors, of course, and want this to be a dialogue, but we thought it'd be helpful to present all of these ideas in a couple of different ways. So we're gonna start off with this sort of overview of where we stand right now, what we are thinking is the best model for oversight for Charlottesville. And then we're gonna go into a little bit more detail about each one of these sections, and then to really get into the nitty-gritty, there's even more detail in the bylaws that's, are sort of the working draft bylaws that we're at right now in the packets that everybody has. So basically, we are looking at a hybrid professional volunteer oversight body that, and we've been calling it sort of a three-armed approach. One section of it is a volunteer civilian review board with a staffed executive director. Another section is a professional auditor and policy advisor that is supposed to take a longer, bigger view of police procedures. And then we also have a community and police engagement section of this sort of police oversight, and that's engagement with the community and with the police is important for any sort of oversight board. So the first sort of arm that we're thinking about is a civilian review board that is assisted by a staffed position with an executive director. So this civilian review board will meet monthly to review all ongoing complaints. The executive director's job is to assist the board, to get them ready for their meetings. They will sort of intake all of the complaints, they'll prepare these reports for the review board, and then they can also be directed to conduct independent investigations at the civilian review board's request.
And the intention is that that person is dedicated to that role only?
Yes.
This is a full-time equivalent?
So where we are standing right now, yes, that's what we're thinking about.
So we've looked into that a little bit, both from the auditor side and the executive director's side. I think the auditor's side is a more important full-time staff position, but from some of the research that we've read and in conversations with other boards, oversight commissions, and NACOL, they don't, they don't suggest having that be a part-time position. Part of that is having, part of that is having, you know, a space that is accessible for people and somebody who's always on staff to take complaints and to help people file complaints.
Do we know, on average, how many complaints come in a month?
So I've, about, I think, 30 a year was what came in approximately in the past couple of years. I've gotten different numbers-
Yeah.
So I'm not 100% sure, but that's the, that's my understanding. And most people that we've talked to have said that in communities where there's a fairly low complaint rate, once you get an oversight board in place, that complaint rate actually increases, because there is a improved sense of, you know-
Yes, someone we can talk to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand hardly, but, so even if there's 30 a year, my math isn't the best, but it's roughly 2.4-
Two a month, yes.
Two and a half a month.
Yep.
And then, so for two and a half a month, we would have a FT, I'm just trying to make sure I conceptualize it.
Sure.
Yep.
And then even if the complaints went up to maybe five a month-
Sure.
We would want this, y'all's request is for there to be a dedicated space for the five complaints to be heard or processed or whatnot.
Yeah, and I think that could be a shared space, but a dedicated employee to that.
Okay.
A shared space with another agency or not, probably not through the police department.
And we're gonna go into some more detail, which may help answer some of these questions.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to get us off track.
No, that's okay. But the idea is that even with five complaints, there's lots of communication that happens with the complainant, there's lots of communication that happens with the review board. To me, it feels like there's more than just five complaints coming in, and this person does something five times, and hopefully we'll explain a little bit more-
Okay.
-as we go further along.
There are obligations and duties of the executive director, as we conceive of her or him, that go beyond just the mere processing of complaints as well.
So there's a sort of suggested job position at the, sort of somewhere in the middle of this packet, so that should help answer that question.
Okay.
But to keep, keep going along with the overview of that, so okay, the police auditor is sort of the second branch or second arm of this civilian oversight board, and this, we see this as another staff person, and this person reviews CPD data and looks for, looking at longer-term trends. So the review board really handles individual cases, but we also need someone to look sort of bigger, longer, broader. So in terms of looking at the trees and also looking at the forest, we've got these two pieces of it that can kind of do both. And then the third section of this model that we're looking at right now is outreach and engagement, and it's basically the civilian review board members, the executive director, and the police monitor, a police auditor, working together on public outreach that we're thinking, what we're seeing as quarterly meetings with the public and the regular reporting that was mentioned in the proposal, in terms of annual reporting, and then maybe even case-by-case reporting as needed. So this is just a very broad overview, and we're gonna kind of keep going through this, and again, questions please, but hopefully we'll get into a little bit more detail that might answer some of those questions.
So for the first, this first arm being the civilian review board, we see this as meeting at least monthly to get an update on complaints as they go on. While complaints are in progress, we see that the board will get an update by the executive director, who will have full access to the complaint file and the investigative, Internal Affairs file. That executive director will present to the board the information that is ongoing in that Internal Affairs process, and that the board may vote by majority at any time to ask the executive director herself to conduct an investigation of a complaint at any time, which would run parallel to the IA investigation. Then at any time, the board may also vote to hold a hearing in which the board takes testimony, invites the complainant, invites witnesses, the target officer, the officer in question, and receives information from Internal Affairs as needed. And then as, that is while the complaint may still be in an investigative posture within Internal Affairs. Once the complaint is finalized, the board will have been receiving regular updates from the executive director about the process of that complaint over the course of the months. Once it's finalized, that board will then have access to the entire Internal Affairs file to review it once the investigation is complete. And then they will have an ability to, again, request additional investigation be done, either by the police department or by the executive director, hold a hearing in which they take testimony, refer cases to mediation, and then make findings. So they'll make findings of fact. If they make findings of fact that differ from Internal Affairs findings, they'll tell both the police department and the City Council and City Manager what those findings are and would request a response from the CPD as to whether or not those recommendations and findings were followed. So the executive director would work in a lot of ways to assist the civilian review board in that they, that she would intake and track all complaints. She would receive a weekly update from Internal Affairs with any new information that's necessary. She would maintain communication with complainants throughout the process. She'd present to the board at monthly meetings the status of all complaints. She would conduct an independent investigation at the request of the board, and she would organize the logistics of holding a hearing at the request of the board. She'd also, she'd also be in charge of planning outreach and engagement in terms of the logistical side of that that would be necessary. Do you want to go over police auditor?
Sure. I mean, so with respect to the police auditor, we see this as a staff position that runs alongside the board, and that's important for a number of reasons, that, you know, whereas the executive director is very much working on behalf of the board, the auditor has her own responsibilities, her own work alongside the board's work and alongside CPD. And it's because the role of the auditor, the mission of an auditor, is ultimately somewhat different. They're sort of taking a long view and a horizontal view. A long view is sort of in time, you know, how cases are handled over time, and then how cases are handled across cases, aggregating data and, for that matter, complaint processing and results, and by that, you know, acting in a proactive way to help develop, say, policy recommendations, recommendations about, for best practices, helping to be a stakeholder in CPD's development of its training regimen. And so, you know, what is the auditor gonna be looking at? This is gonna be someone, first of all, talking about their skills, who has skills in, you know, data processing, policy analysis. So they're gonna be looking at arrest data, they're gonna be looking at data on, well, for that matter, all incidents of use of force, any case that involves an officer involved death, preventative detention data, and gonna be sort of the expert when it comes to understanding, and for that matter, interpreting, since it's the public-facing and the board-facing part of the job, interpreting for the board and for the public what the Internal Affairs policies and procedures are, what the department's policies and procedures are more generally, how they are implemented. As with the executive director, the auditor will have complete access to the CPD files, but she's doing different work with them. It's not a, it's not a matter of looking at a specific case that's being handled by IA and figuring out what exactly is going on with that particular case, but again, looking across cases. A big part of the auditor's work, and I think this will be quite time-consuming, is just, you know, and this is part of the interpretation work, is writing reports, you know, taking what she has learned and, on at least a quarterly basis, reporting to the CRB, and on, at least once annually, creating a more sophisticated report that really promotes the kinds of transparency that we think is integral to oversight. And in terms of how the auditor would work with the board, I mean, I won't go too much into it right now, but when it comes to community engagement, we think all actors, civilian and staff, have roles to play. And this is where the CRB and the executive director, working on behalf of the CRB, and the auditor working alongside it, can get together when it comes to outreach and being responsive to the community, its concerns and its needs.
Now, one of the things we learned in our research was that there, this is a fairly common combination between a CRB and a police auditor. It's what Fairfax has, it's what, I couldn't give you the number off the top of my head, but I'd say maybe 80 boards across the country look like this with a staff position. So it's, there are people across the country with this particular skill set, and they're all staffed, staffed positions, it's a professional job, it's a, it's a job that plenty of people have across the country, so it's not a, this is not sort of a job that we created out of thin air.
And it is traditional for it to be alongside-
To be alongside the CRB.
... rather than subsumed within.
That's right.
And I'd just say, more generally, and we can take this up when we ultimately get to budget, what we learned from NACOL and what we learned from our own independent research is, it's rare, to almost the point of nonexistence, to have an oversight board that does not have professional staff help. And typically, you know, we're talking, a lot of these municipalities are bigger than Charlottesville, but typically several professional staff members working on behalf of the board.
So then the third element is the outreach and engagement element. I'm not gonna repeat what we've already said, other than we've talked about the engagement with the community being a big part of that. I think that's one of the ways that our board has, we haven't been given as much time as I think would be necessary to develop a really robust community engagement strategy, and we've done, I think, what we could with the time. But I think that's a really critical part of this moving forward, to make sure that this oversight body continues to be responsive to the needs and can change as the needs of the community change. So not only community outreach, but also ensuring that one CRB member is sort of the engagement coordinator for the board, and that that person is working with the executive director and the auditor, and making sure that all parts of the community, particularly starting with communities that are experiencing disparate policing, that those communities get engaged early and often for listening sessions, for, you know, public forums, whatever the, the- the, the format needs to be. And another way we see this happening is that this would be a way for the community and the police department to, to come to the table. And so the police department has, you know, as you all know, recently begun presenting data about complaints, use of force, stop and frisk and arrest. And we see this oversight agency having a pretty critical role in sort of being a bridge builder and being able to, to establish, set time quarterly or more frequently where, where the community and the police department come together to talk about, to talk about what's happening in the community, talk about both the data, but also the experiences that, that people in the community are having. Well, in doing the research for, from other boards across the country and, and within the state, there's only two, but the ones that we've seen that are, ones that we've seen that are successful do that very well and the ones that don't respond to the community's needs and are not open and transparent and incredibly independent from the police department end up sort of disappearing into the woodworks and some boards have been around for 30 years and don't ever really do anything because they don't stay accountable to their communities.
Is this a good time to sort of check in, to ask questions? Should we chat or we can keep going with our presentation?
I would prefer you keep going.
Keep going, okay.
The complaint process, I hope you.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah, I can try to work on this. So one of the things that we wanted to sort of show was how we were going to handle complaint processes in our model. And, and there's the, what the research, what we've seen in the research is there's basically a, a point where you handle the investigation, you handle the complaint process one way before the IA concludes their investigation and you can handle it a different way after the IA process concludes their investigation. So we're trying to sort of outline how we see this board handling complaints process. So the complaint comes into the CRB HQs and, and the executive director can intake all of these complaints and that way we're better able to track how well they're being responded to. So, so if all the complaints come in from one place, then we sort of have all the information we need about that complaint. And then the, the CPD conducts their internal investigation based off the information that came into the executive director. So during the investigation process, there's going to be these monthly meetings. And we see the executive director creating a, basically a report of all of the ongoing investigations and reporting that to the board every month. So that there's, there's a way for, for all of the complaints to, to not get lost in, in the woods. So there's always a, a method of, of keeping up with who, what process the complaint is in. So after, and during these monthly meetings, there's, there's a chance for the board to ask for the executive director to do an independent investigation and also to do sort of a preliminary hearing at the request of the board. So the board has that ability to do that. So then after the CPD concludes their internal affairs investigation, we'd also see this director, this executive director keeping a list of those and reporting that back to the board. So within the past month, these are the complaints that have been closed and this is sort of the result of those complaints. And then again, this is a chance for the board to do, to ask for an investigation or, or I think at this point, just to really to hold a hearing. And because the board, because the CPD IA investigation is concluded, we think this is an opportunity for the board members to have a closer look at the IA investigation file and the information in that file. So this is sort of a very broad overview of how we see the complaint process working between the civilian review board and the executive director.
This goes more to the question of what are these two staff positions doing? So we see the executive director planning, organizing and supervising all activities of the CRB and working for the CRB to achieve the CRB's mission of building and sustaining public trust and building confidence in the complaint process. So as we said, the executive director is really focused on, on complaints, whereas the auditor is focused both on complaints in this sort of long and broad way, as Josh described, but also in all the rest of it and, and what we'll talk about next. So she will, she being the executive director will be the person to intake complaints. If complaints come into the police department, there will be a reciprocal communication there so that they can make sure that everybody has access to all complaints. They'll maintain communication with the complainants, they'll develop office and data keeping procedures, develop a procedure by which the processing and dissemination of complaints to the CPD is done efficiently and effectively and provide all professional support to the CRB. They'll conduct research as needed, data reviews, policy analyses and preparing of public reports. They'll also be, thank you, I don't know why I'm reading it off of there when I have it in here. The executive director will also be responsible for managing all the administrative functions such as procurement and record management and she'll develop office procedures, she'll work alongside the CRB chairperson and will serve as a, supposed to say, non-voting CRB member. She'll serve, or maybe it's supposed to say voting, I thought it was non-voting. She organizes and arranges all training and compliance. That's a big part of this is how the board is trained to be able to do its job. We've had to do some organizing of training and it is a almost full-time job on that. And she will assist them in developing meeting agendas, summaries, reports, outreach and correspondence with the public. You want to do this, police auditor?
Yeah, I can go through this real quick and I'm not going to necessarily read straight off of it, but basically the auditor moderates and reviews the internal investigation of the CPB complaints and use of force cases at which an individual is killed or seriously injured. Basically, we see this as, as the police auditor being able to provide recommendations for improvement in CPD policies, trainings and practices and develops issues, public reports of her findings, consults with the police chief, IA bureau and others in the police department while the investigation is ongoing. And then at the request of the board, city manager, auditor also conducts examinations of relevant CRB policies or data.
Where do you see these positions falling, sorry, within the broader city organization?
That's a conversation we just presume we'd have with you.
Right.
We didn't, we haven't thought about that. Or we thought about it, but figured that would be more up your alley. So then the next thing we're going to talk about was, was money.
Yep. So, I mean, this is.
Everyone's favorite topic.
NAHL was extremely helpful with respect to this because they actually got, recently received a grant from the Department of Justice to track the funding of and other relevant information related to oversight boards across the country. And whilst they emphasized that it's still a work in progress, they handed over their complete spreadsheet to us, which included the oversight budgets of every board for which they could find an oversight budget. I did a, a few things, which I sketch out in my memo, to maximize the chances that what we're doing is comparing apples to apples. So, you know, I struck from the spreadsheet municipalities with more than a million people. The one exception to that was Fairfax County because it's a Virginia board, serves 1.2 million people. It struck me that we want to include any comparison we can to another Virginia board. I removed specialty boards, there are boards that oversee, you know, BART in the San Francisco Bay area, BART transit officers in the San Francisco Bay area, likewise in New York City, likewise in Chicago. So I, you know, and then tried to focus on, and then I just looked at the numbers as they were and, you know, tried to determine what those numbers said. And what they said fairly clearly is that if you're committed to oversight, it's an expensive enterprise. You'll see in the spreadsheet, there, you know, there's one board that doesn't seem to have a budget, a couple of boards that are funded, and I guarantee you it's not an effective board, a couple of boards that are funded at a level under $100,000, but the other 30-plus boards are funded at the level of, you know, typically several hundred thousand dollars, in some cases several million dollars, such that when I crunched the numbers and drew up an average, the average budget was almost a million dollars, $967,000. Now, to be fair, obviously we're talking about municipalities that even though I've removed the municipalities with over a million people, these are still places that are in the main substantially larger and with larger departments to oversee than Charlottesville and the CPD. So, you know, the averages there were, the average department size of the municipalities that we were, NAHL had data on, were 980 officers and staff. We've got a department of, I think, 165 approximately officers and staff. The average police department budget for these municipalities was 162,000, sorry, 162 million plus dollars. I think the recent proposal for CPD's budget was 18 million. And the average population size was, of these municipalities was 417,000 people, Charlottesville's just over 48,000 people. So, you know, we're looking at an average department size, it's about six times as large as Charlottesville's, an average department budget and municipality population size, it's about nine times larger than Charlottesville. So what I did was, you know, just classic high school math, looked at the ratios and figured out what that meant for Charlottesville and came to the conclusion that, you know, a department of CPD's size corresponds with $163,000 budget. A, 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 a budget, the size of CPD's budget corresponds with about $111,000 budget. But, you know, an alternative metric that NAHL pointed us to is to say lots of oversight boards, lots of municipalities, what they do with their oversight boards is they peg the oversight board's budget at 1% of the department's budget, which if the CPD's budget for the coming year is $18 million, translates to $180,000 for this board. Finally, a population size, the size of Charlottesville corresponds to a, a budget of $107,000. So, you know, we get these numbers that range from 107,000 up to 180,000, but we think it's very important to, and the reason why we're going to emphasize that we think our budget needs to be $180,000 or more is just a sort of classic economic concept called economies of scale that says, you know, if you are a smaller enterprise, it takes more to do your work than a bigger enterprise. So, you know, I give the example of a bigger bakery that's making 1,000 donuts a day as compared to a small bakery that's making 100 donuts a day, it's not going to be the case that it's going to cost the bigger bakery 10 times as much. The smaller bakery is going to need to do some of the same things that that big bakery does. It's still going to have to have an oven and the oven for the bigger bakery is not going to be an oven that costs 10 times as much, it's going to be a bigger, but, uh, oven that costs a little bit more. And you actually see this already in the stuff that we were given by NAHL. And when you look at Charlottesville, you know, the average department size for these municipalities with almost, you know, nine times our population, the department size is 980, our department size is 165. So it's six times greater, six times bigger department size than we have. Why do we need 165 officers and staff, you know, rather than 1/9th of the 980 that you see in, you know, these municipalities that are nine times as large as us? Because the police department also understands economies of scale. To do their job as a small enterprise, for a small municipality, it requires more. You need to have, put, put it simply, a bigger enterprise, a bigger municipality can do more with less. We are a smaller municipality, we don't have that luxury. So what that means is we need to be funded at the top end of all of these ranges, which is why we're asking for $180,000 or more as the budget for this board, which we think would pay for two staff attorneys, I'm sorry, pay for two staff members, they don't need to be attorneys, pay for two staff members and have money there for training, for events, for all of the administrative work that goes into this enterprise.
So we just can point to this spreadsheet, which has the, you know, city-state total swarm personnel, civilian population, total budget and total budget for all law enforcement agencies overseen. We're not going to go through this now, but we wanted to give that to you so you all had that to, to look at.
Mr. Murphy, do you, not for right now, but could we just have our HR take a look at how we would, I mean, I just know when we think about benefits, I know when we've done other allocation of staff positions, the numbers seem to add up. I'm just trying to get a sense for what's, what we could realistically do with 180,000 or what it would take if we, what would the actual cost be to, with the proposed staffing? I'm just to understand that we're comparing apples to apples.
Sure. So the rest of what we had prepared was just basically a, a sort of a snapshot of where the draft, the bylaws are that we're working on right now, so you get a sense of, of what we're working on and where we are with it. And I don't think it's necessary to go through this line by line right now, but we just wanted to provide the, the city councils and the public sort of a sense of where we are with things, since we're getting so close to the, the deadline in a few weeks.
Sure. At a really high level, I wouldn't mind if Mr. Blair, you could give us some context around, just looking at the content of what's in here in this draft, what would be more appropriate, you know, in an, you know, what may, we have to look at to pull out for ordinances versus what would be in traditional bylaws? So do you mind giving some guidance so we can kind of have as a background?
Sure. I would take a look at the, for instance, Planning Commission in terms of how, I understand that your charge was the bylaws, but you probably can appreciate, and I know you have to present a document and materials to the council for their consideration, but a number of the aspects that you would find that are within the bylaws, which again, that's the document you were asked to produce, would probably be more appropriate in a city council ordinance in terms of, for, for instance, membership, how the council appoints and the like. I mean, again, I understand the medium in which you delivered it, but probably some of this is for the council's consideration in an ordinance form.
And so I, that would be great as, once we get further along, if, if we could sit down and have the conversation. I mean, my understanding was that a lot of what's in, I mean, what was asked in the resolution was, is a lot of what's in these bylaws now. And so we just put it all in one place, thinking if we just stick it all someplace, then you can pull out what you need to, for the right place. But I think it would be great if we could set a time, sometime in the next week, where we could sit down and actually start parsing out what needs to go in which documents. So we'll send you an email. So in our bylaws, I'm just going to go through headings. We've got our mission, the duties, and this is just for the board. So this isn't for the auditor, the executive director, this is just what the, the civilian review board appointed by city council would do. So we've kept everything else out of the bylaws at this time. So we have the mission statement, duties, the structure and selection, which involves appointees and the people that this board is saying we believe in the bylaws should be represented on all future boards, a stipend for board members, which would be included in that budget.
Yeah.
Membership restrictions, so who could not serve on the board. Relationships with the oversight staff, so some of this is, obviously would not be in the bylaws, but we stuck it in there. Terms of service and removal, what happens in terms of a vacancy, the level of city, city staff support expected, the city attorney serving as the legal advisee to the board unless there's a conflict of interest.
I'm just curious, under the city staff support, did you use other boards as a point of comparison?
Yeah, I mean, it, this is really dependent on whether there's staff, if there's an executive director of the board, a lot of that responsibility in terms of assistance to the board would go on the executive director rather than on, you know, Mr. Murphy or somebody like that. So that, we, we did use other boards as examples, but that portion's actually pretty sparse just because we think we need to have a better sense. And I think for the first year, we will have to have somebody who works for the city providing that role until at least there, there are people hired into those positions. So we will have to flesh out that language, I think, significantly. But that's, in most bylaws, it's pretty, it's pretty standard to have that language in there. The use of non-legal independent contractors if necessary. The budget is, we have in here that there's no less than 1% of the budget of the Charlottesville Police Department to be adjusted annually. You know, use of funds, organization of the. You know, use of funds, organization of the board, ad hoc tasks of the board, community advisory panels, the ability to reach out to community members to help advise the board as needed, the training of the board so that the board can arrange with the city police department what trainings need to be done. For example, we talked about doing the civilian police academy this year, and there hasn't been one to our knowledge to participate in. So we didn't want to mandate that somebody would have to participate in that, because if that doesn't take place, then, then they're not meeting their mandate. And we've also heard from some people that there are certain concerns for doing something like a ride-along within a police vehicle, that certain people who would like to be on the board don't feel for their physical safety or mental health, that that would be an appropriate training for them. So we want to have a provision in there where people can opt out and do other types of training that would meet similar needs, but not at the expense of their mental or physical health. Ongoing subject matter expert training, so that the board is up to date on police oversight and policing. The meeting and voting, we have, you know, everything's subject to FOIA, votes all being in public, meetings all in public, and then the duties, powers, and functions are where it becomes, I think, pretty, it's going to be very, it's going to depend a lot on whether or not we have specifically a staffed auditor, because if there is no staffed auditor, a professional person who's looking at the long-term trends, then we see that that's a necessary function within this community, and so then do we put that on this board to do that? And that's, you know, a pretty specific expertise, but we would write that into these bylaws if there's no auditor to do that.
Could I ask one question?
Of course.
Just out of curiosity, on the meeting and voting section, it talks about the board requires a quorum of six voting members?
Yes.
Any reason, I mean, usually, most bodies, it's a majority, and I know you'll have nine voting members, any reason for six?
There's no specific reason for six so far as I know. What we didn't want was a board that was disabled by the fact that it didn't have its full complement of members at any given time. So we didn't want it to, you know, especially since we care very much about the composition of the board being sufficiently representative, and the need to go back to the well if it's not sufficiently representative. It may mean that the board is operating with less than its, with fewer than its full complement at any given time. And so we had to set a quorum number somewhere. It could readily be five or seven.
Okay.
Yeah. I think.
Yeah, I don't think any of us is wedded to that number, just the idea that, to encourage more participation. So we can kind of go, I don't think we need to go through this, this is just what we went through, but we can just sort of demonstrate the language that is, that we have in place to represent what we've already gone through on those flow charts. The auditing and policy review at this point is very small, as I said, short. The ability to make proposed changes at any time, proposed changes to CPD policy at any time with at least a mandated response, obviously not a mandated change to be made, but a mandated response from CPD is in here. The need to have robust reports and the community engagement, which we've already talked about. We want this board to have, we know that the city manager has all authority over staffing, but we want the board to have specific say in staffing, to be involved in hiring panels when that happens.
So I have a question in that regard.
Yes, sir.
Just even as I'm hearing it, so are you all essentially thinking that this board would be a, like a standalone board, similar to like the Housing Authority? Or are you envisioning this board being something more like the Planning Commission, but with, like, staff from city?
Which the, which the, yes.
Yeah, which the, yeah, because they have Ms. Chrissy.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, we haven't talked about that specifically, and I don't know enough about the difference between those two boards to say what.
So the Housing, the Housing Authority Board is its own entity, they have their own charter. Like, CRHA is, the city can't, quote unquote, tell CRHA what to do. And is that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, are you all trying to establish something like that, like you're a separate board from the city, or you want to come under the auspice of the city, which would mean that?
Yeah. We've been discussing it as similar to this board and advisory board to city council.
So this would be an advisory board to city council?
Mm-hmm.
Similar to, Mr. Blair, okay, so similar to Planning Commission, or similar to like the Minority Business Advisory Task Force, something like that? Would this be similar?
Things like the Human Rights Commission.
The Human Rights Commission, okay.
Planning Commission, other boards and commissions like that.
Okay.
But city council doesn't have the authority to hire beyond the city manager and weighing in on the city attorney and our finance director. So I'm just trying to underst, because right now it's implying that we seek to hire and promote staff, that has to be coordinated with the city manager, correct?
Yes. So the idea would be that as, that this, that the board would be, whether it's, that the, that city council would empower the board to sit on a hiring panel.
A panel, okay.
With the city manager.
Right. I just wanted to get the clarification, not saying like, what y'all saying is wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to get that clarification, so we all understand where we are.
And in a lot, in a lot of ways, I will say that we spent eight and a half months focusing on the board and what the board itself would do, and we saw these discussions as being ways of how do we integrate that board into the governance of the city of Charlottesville. So, so, so we haven't talked a lot about the question that you asked, just because we're focusing on the structure of the board itself, and we think now is a good time to start having this discussion about, about which way do we see it and things along those lines.
I mean, there's, there's sort of three tensions. What we're trying to create is a board, we're trying to stress the need for a board that has independence, but we understand that the tension on the other side is that there are limits to that because we need the support of the city. And at the same time, the third tension is there are legal limits to what we can do all by ourselves, and those are some of the things we've talked with John Blair about throughout this process. So, I mean, I think, you know, within that zone, there's some amount of flexibility. We want to have a conversation about how much this is an entity within the umbrella of the city, but, I mean, like, we, independence is one of our touchstones, but what we don't want is to be, you know, cast off and say, well, you guys don't get any support from the city because you wanted independence. We want the support of the city, but we also want to be an entity that has, you know, the authority to make decisions that are meaningful. We understand there may be limits to the degree that we can make meaningful decisions when it comes to bottom-line determinations like discipline, but, you know, we, we want to have our own say.
So is that, you all want to make, you all want to be able to make decisions or recommendations?
Well, I think we have to ultimately, when it comes to bottom-line discipline, make recommendations, but we want to be very much a part of that process. And we're hoping, and we're, not just hoping, but what we're calling for is that when it comes to that, it's not just a matter of, well, we make a contrary recommendation and it's not followed and we hear nothing about it, but actually that there is a back and forth and reason-giving, explanations made for why a recommendation is or isn't taken up.
And to the end, obviously recognizing the importance for independence, when you look to other boards, what is, what is that collaborative relationship between the police department and those independent boards?
I mean, Gama's done a lot of the outreach, the research of external boards. I would say, just my own perusal, some of these boards have a lot more authority along certain dimensions than we're asking for. We understand that there are certain limits that come with being a Dillon Rule state, and particularly a board in this Dillon Rule state, with the additional legal constraints specific to Virginia.
But I'm just saying, even just like to look at improving processes, I mean, I'd like to think that there's going to be some, some collaboration going on to do that.
Yeah. And other boards, if you talk about other boards in other cities, it's a wide range of very tight collaboration, where they're meeting regularly, discussing things regularly, and they both see each other as, as helpful, as the necessary parts for, for sort of oversight and policing in the city.
So you don't, oh, sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. And then there are other boards that are less communicative and less integrated, and those tend to be less effective. So you see the wide range.
So you don't see, you don't envision this board as being adversarial, you see it being more collaborative?
If you're asking me personally, yes, I would like to see that, that this is necessary for both the police and for oversight to work together to improve the community.
But, but independence and genuine oversight means, you know, if there's a problem, this is a board that's going to be committed to addressing that problem. But yeah, the, the goal is, is not to strike an adversarial position, but to strike a productive position. In terms of the relationship with the city council itself, you'll notice, and I don't think we're wedded to this provision, but there's a provision in there that says an ex officio board member, non-voting, but would be a sitting city council member, and the idea there is to, you know, facilitate that relationship, and also as city governance transitions or what have you, there's, there's a way in which there's some permanence and, you know, institutional knowledge that gets passed through and bridges that are built.
Yeah. You guys can continue, I don't want to delay, I'm already getting texts and I'm late, so you can just keep going.
And I will say that this is sort of.
The city council's, you can still, he's in Virginia, but you can still.
No, go ahead, go ahead, keep going.
But you want her to say yes?
Okay. And, so you can disagree, but we sort of presented what we came here to present, and just to give a broad overview, we're hoping that there's some time for some discussions or questions or, or anything along those lines.
So obviously this, this back part, which is the proposed bylaws, which we understand there'll be some guidance on how we kind of divvy this up into different documents. It's a working draft, and there's certain parts at the end that you say are certainly really working. I'm just trying to understand how we can best facilitate feedback, knowing that there are some things you're still working through, and so I guess at this point it seems like, here we have what we have, and maybe we just kind of give ourselves a certain period of time to kind of review it in detail, give you that feedback, so before you dive back into any more work on this, that you have that input from us?
Right.
Yeah.
I would.
Go ahead.
I would also be interested in hearing feedback, so also let me preface my comments by saying I worked with Ms. Adiola and members of the, she said, no, don't bring me into this. We worked together in terms of writing the resolution to get the CRB up and running, but I would be interested in hearing from a couple of entities, one from legal aid about how they feel about this document, but also from the police department about how they feel about the document in regards to things they like, what they don't like, what they want to hear, and that's again, from both entities. So that would.
Great.
That would be beneficial for me. Right, Mr. O'Donnell? Okay.
So we're going to get them to give us feedback?
Yeah.
Right now, or you mean in general?
Oh, no, not right now. No.
Okay, yes, that's fair, yeah.
Mr. Kofi and Chief Pragney.
And I would say, given our, given our timeline, and let's just, we should try to have it prioritized as a term, you know, first pass at feedback from anyone we're asking from it from, so that then we can digest it and then also be giving meaningful feedback to you, given this timeline that we're looking at.
And is it possible that, that we be involved in that feedback conversation? Because we'd like to hear that feedback.
We should all receive the same.
Yeah, we'd be very interested in that as well.
That'd be great. I think where we stand now is, I mean, and I don't think any of us is expecting to leave this meeting with an understanding of what the budget will be, but a lot of the to-be-determined portions of the bylaws really are, are dependent on whether there's staffed positions that do that work. So we, I think that language will be written, whether it's into a job description or into bylaws at some point. Given our time restrictions, you know, we're two weeks away from the deadline of turning in bylaws, and we only have one regular meeting between now and then. I'm wondering what you all think is feasible in terms of getting some feedback to us, just so that we're not stuck with, you know, one day to do edits and.
Right, and I think we also should be realistic about understanding, like, you know, I'm all about a deadline, but like, let's, you know, our agenda, the first week of May is done. I mean, we're, we're pretty stacked there, you're not going to be coming to talk to us then. So let's just be realistic about this and make sure, I mean, a lot of progress has been made, a lot of work has been done. I don't want us to kind of get ninety percent the way there and then cut ourselves short of getting to the hundred percent. Doesn't mean we want to get through, you know, months ahead. I mean, I think we want to still clip away with this and keep that, that pressure on.
Yeah.
Mayor Walker, what do you think in terms of us getting together and?
So the feedback from the community, we also need to set up a meeting with staff to go through this together. I mean, we should plan to at least have that done within the next week.
Week.
From today, and at that point, we can send.
You and I can do that.
Send the information out after that.
Great.
And in terms of the community feedback, I mean, if we could plan to have that within, you know, around the same time frame, within a week.
Is that true?
I mean, first, I think we're not at a final point for any of this, anyway, because what we're ultimately getting to is you presenting us still a draft bylaws to the full council and the public.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we see that we've presented a draft. We've met our May first deadline.
So we can't say you didn't make your deadline? All right, I got you. I see the game, man.
You see what we're saying here?
I got you.
But our terms do, sorry, Heather, I don't mean to interrupt you, but our terms do end, five out of six of our terms end June.
First.
Fourth.
Fourth.
Four. So we're still, even if we're not trying to meet a May first deadline, you know, we're still in that.
So we can have, at a council session, if we need to extend the dates, we could do that.
You can.
But again, I think that's another whole month, let's just, let's see the progress that we make.
One question I would have before I have to leave. In regards to the staff positions, one thing that you said earlier, I'm a little confused just what I heard, because in one regard, the initial, excuse me, the opening remarks where we know this is a process, it takes, you know, maybe five to seven years, but then I saw the staff positions, like, no, we want the staff positions ASAP. So can you help me on this, like, is that something that you want phased in, or do you mean this is next week?
I think we want it.
Because we have to think about the budgetary constraints of us as well.
Well, we know that you all just finished your budget. I think this is, this was our, our presentation to you, that we want both of these staff positions as soon as possible, understanding that there is some leeway and lag time. I don't think we're thinking five to seven years before the staff positions get in place, but five to seven years before a lot of boards from, from, you know, inception, so you could look at that as, you know, when the resolution was drafted, as the inception, as being the beginning of that timeline. But I think we're thinking within a year that these positions would be staff.
So I'd just be quick.
So I have a question.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I want to be transparent and honest, it's going to be really difficult for me to say, like, let's go with two staff positions, ED and so forth, with the budget that you all presented, based off a couple of things, like, one, the Human Rights Commission, which I see this entity being similar to, they don't even have this, these kind of positions, and they've requested it in a mirage of different ways on several occasions, so I can see there being some internal, well, we've been asking for this kind of stuff, then you bring in new, and I think we need to work through that perspective of it. The second point is, as you just alluded to, we just finished our budget, so we're going to have to figure out, if we were to address these staff concerns, what part we're going to bring it out of. There's just discussions that we would have to look at there, which may take some time, being that it is a quote-unquote off-cycle request. And then lastly, is there a way for us to be able to phase some of these things to meet the needs of what the community says, what the police says, and what you all may be recommending? Is it everything at once? Is it maybe one? Is it two? Is it getting the board set up first? Like, those are the things where I am right now.
I just want to, like, an addendum to the five-to-seven-year timeline. I mean, one of the reasons why it takes a long period of time is less on the question of, what's that, is less on the question of political will, and more on the question of, you know, sometimes you need things like an ordinance passed, or in a Dillon Rule state, you got to go to Richmond and make something happen. We actually don't think there's anything in here that requires anything like that, although there are certain things we in our minds see as, you know, best practices for boards and what we would like to see this board grow into, that would require those kinds of change. kinds of changes. I firmly believe, I understand your concerns and I know that we're right now off-cycle, but I firmly believe that this work was really hard with a group of civilians, you know, I may be a lawyer, but this is not my area of expertise, you know? Criminal defenses, but not, you know, institution building and regulation of police directly. So this has been really, really hard and in order to grow the board over a five to seven-year period, we need that kind of professional help. Exactly what that looks like is something we can definitely, you know, have extended conversations.
Right, we saw this, I'll speak for myself, I saw this as we're presenting what we think the best practice for civilian oversight is. And it doesn't mean this starts June 1st as soon as our term ends, but there will be some sort of path between where we are now and whatever we agree with is sort of, is approved. So to me, that's almost like the next stage of this, is sort of figuring out what that transition looks like, what can come up now?
Got you.
What needs a little bit of time? This, to me, is overall best practices based on what we've heard about the city and what we've researched from other places. And then we need to work together to figure out how to make whatever we agree to is going to be a reality, a reality.
This is the end goal, this is the grand scheme.
Exactly.
I am trying to say something. So just from, so first of all, thank you all for...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for your work. Some of the questions that I'll be asking, you know, throughout all of the discussions, the auditor is real clear, you know, to me, this position, the executive director, especially with the number of complaints that we have coming in, just sitting here thinking about it right now, I would probably want to see if the, what the CRB established, if we start getting more complaints in once the board is established? And then does the number then warrant, you know, an executive director position? If there's just a way to, that we can figure out, you know, what this, and I understand the other job duties and descriptions, but that's just one question at this moment that I have. And of course, you know, the community engagement and outreach is what all of this is being done for in the first place. So that's just, that's the only point that I have at this time about the three components. Oh, I needed to, yeah, can I adjourn the city council meeting and Heather and I will still be here, but not as official? I mean, we're still, but you all know.
Yeah.
You all get it.
We wanted to give a chance for the public to weigh in.
Yeah, we had talked about giving a chance for the public to respond to what we've talked about tonight, any questions, any specific concerns. But Rosia, that would be up to you if you want to do that.
Do you want to hit the poll?
Yeah, do the public one. We're not, but they have no...
We're here.
All right, all right. Well, back to the behalf of the CRB, would there be any community members that would like to speak amongst our draft of our bylaws on anything that you feel or would like to have an input and say?
And I just want to apologize in advance. In the next five, 10, 15 minutes at longest, at latest, I have to go to a law and public service event for a graduation event for certain students at the law school. So sorry that I'm going to have to duck out.
And for those who haven't been to our meetings, we don't have speaking limitations, time limitations or rules.
Well, we have some, because we're going to have to leave shortly.
Just saying, there's no timer, just so that guys can get your juices flowing.
I just have a question.
Can you come up?
Did in your research, may call in the chart and the money and the staff, your point about the number of complaints, is that any relationship to the, do you know if there's a relationship about the number of complaints that are put each year and whether, how much help they really need, the board needs?
What, Nikle didn't give us any numbers. Yeah, yeah, Nikle didn't give us any numbers on the number of complaints that other boards process. What they did make quite clear during their all-day training with us is that you can, and we kind of suggested as much earlier, you can only, in conversation with Council Member Bellamy, you can only put so much stock in the complaint numbers to date, because what we were told is when you've got a well-functioning oversight board, the complaints could skyrocket. And then if oversight is working and if the department is, you know, engaged in best practices and has established credibility and legitimacy with the community, you could see them drop. So where they are right now is not necessarily indicative of where they'll be, but I think Council Member Bellamy anticipated that when he said, "Well, you know, if it rises to five a month as opposed to two a month, we just don't really know where it's going to be." And I think it's hard to track for Nikle, which is why they didn't provide us with those numbers.
So the way that it's done in Fairfax is that they have a, an auditor and then two, I think they're called analysts in their office, and one person spends, of the three, they divvy up the responsibilities, but one of those three is full-time committed to being the helper of the CRB. So in Fairfax's estimation, it takes a full-time staff persons to do that. They use different resources from within their three-person staff to meet that need. They have a larger department, they have a larger complaint process, but sort of in the economies of skills mindset, they, what I've read in the research is that you should have a dedicated staff person to the role that you're asking for. It's a way to improve legitimacy with the process.
Hi, Walt Heinecke, I'm a city resident, also a member of the People's Coalition on criminal justice reform. First, I want to say, I just think you guys are heading in the right direction. Thank you very much, obvious about the amount of work that you've put into this. It's like, it's definitely going in the right direction and it's, the intent of it is the most important thing and I think you've got the intent of the whole thing right. So thank you for all the hard work so far. I think the bylaw, I've read the bylaws twice now, the proposed bylaws, and they look really solid. I think there are a few things that need, maybe need to be tweaked, like issues that regard, that relate to the way that the membership of the board is composed. I think the, I think the People's Coalition is still concerned about how we may need to guarantee that certain affected communities in this, in Charlottesville, who have been affected by this particular problem, have a particular slot on the, on the, on the board as it's constituted. So there's things like that that I think need to be, need to be thought through and maybe discussed. But I wanted to just mention one other thing. I'm not feeling, right now, I'm not feeling the urgency from council about this. You know, from my point of view, the plane has crashed into the building. Now, I wish we could get Mr. Stout to come up here and speak, but he's got another job to do. He just published an article that talked about the incredible statistics in this town about the disparities in charging and policing in this town. We've had, we've now had for quite a while, for years as a matter of fact, statistics on stop and frisk that show that only 20, that the African-American population here is 20% and that they're stopped and frisked at a much higher rate than that. So I'm not feeling, I'm not feeling the urgency at this point of getting this done and accomplished in a way that leads to a board that has true independence, that does work with the police department in a cooperative way, but has true independence. That being said, these discussions that I heard today are really problematic from my point of view, because when you bring up the Human Rights Commission, you all did that wrong. You did it wrong and what we don't want to see is that repeated. So this whole idea of, you know, there's not enough, there's not enough, there's not enough statistics or numbers about demand for complaints, we went through this with the board, with the Human Rights Commission, and it's nonsense. If you build it, they will come. We all know that the political culture of this town suppresses people from coming forward. You know it. Right? So let's build it. And I also know that council works in this way. You oftentimes, when you want to do something, you'll do something in a pilot project modality. You'll say, "Let's try to do this for two years and see how it works out. So let's try and do this right for two years and then see how it works out in terms of the complaint process." Because I know that the complaints are there, we all know that the complaints are there. We know that most people in this community don't believe or don't trust that there's any place to bring those complaints to. So can we flip the narrative here and stop nickel-and-diming commissions like the proposed CRB or the Human Rights Commission? Can we stop nickel-and-diming them and say that they're not going to have the demand? Can we just flip that narrative and assume that the racism and this white supremacy in this town is so significant that that demand is buried? Right? So I'm just hoping that we kind of can reframe and rethink it, because I'm hearing the same kinds of arguments that we went through with the Human Rights Commission. And we don't want to repeat that, because the Human Rights Commission is a mess, it's not doing what it's intended to do, and we don't want the intentions of this, the work that you've done to be undone by the way that appointments are made, by underfunding, by a lack of political will in this community. So I'm just really hoping that you keep moving in the direction that you're moving. And I think there are a couple of other people from the People's Coalition who have other things to say about this.
Thank you.
I was going to ask, Walt, would you mind if I just asked, is there anything that you could, you think the CRB can do to help push that envelope anymore in terms of...
You mean what, your group?
Yeah, I mean technically, this is a CRB meeting. So what can, is there anything that we can...
So I think the public input's really important, getting public comment and public input. I think having conversations with the police department is important and Mr. Blair is important and members of the council, those things are important. The more public and transparent those are, the better off I think we'll all be, rather than, you know, waiting around to do this in private, you know, and, you know, not in the light of day. But I think you're, I think, I mean, I've read the proposed bylaws twice now and I'm about ready to say, "Let's go, let's do it right now." I mean, I don't see why we're waiting, because we all know from, from Mr. Stout's recent article and from the statistics on stop and frisk.
Could you come back to the mic? Sure.
I didn't mean to wait till you sat down to ask you your question.
So I mean, I don't know, we all know that basically the need is significant and we have history here, right? So I don't know, understand, you know, I just don't want to see us doing the same kind of bureaucratic kinds of things that we've done in the past to boards and commissions, where, you know, they're undone at the beginning with funding, with a lack of belief or trust in the intent, and then they're undone in the way that they're staffed. And that they're undone in the way that they're disabled in the way that, that appointments are made. So I think one of the things that we're really looking forward here, looking forward to discuss with you is the idea of how certain groups in this town, who have been the target of this kind of abuse for years, need to be, have a secured spot on the, on the, on the CRB when the appointments are made. So the appointment process, I think, is huge, right? And significant. So I just think that having those discussions in the light of day is important.
I think that's what we talked about. Is there anyone else? Ms. Adiola?
Hi, I'm Adia Logan-Kate. I think, separate and apart from the request for feedback from legal aid, which we're happy to provide to CRB and council within a week, I think something to build off of what Walt Heinecke was saying about showing a commitment to this and especially establishing the collaborative spirit that the CRB is hoping to have with CPD, is the question of the conversation around what documents, information, data, the future CRB will have access to. And I think that process of crafting a memorandum of understanding is something that will require like this level of detail, this level of research and input and insight, and I think it actually needs to start happening now. And to wait to have that process begin after this initial CRB has finished its task, I think misses an opportunity clearly to show to the community that, you know, the city is serious about this endeavor, to the extent that those open questions are the questions that if they get buried, if they aren't answered publicly and community members know, okay, the complaint reports, body-won camera footage, other types of information, data such as the data that's used to compile the arrest history that has been detailed in Charlottesville. If that information is not known now as being available to CRB members and in what, I guess, at what level they'll have access to it, I think that really stunts the ability for this board to take off, separate and apart from the professional staff to support it and that structure and the funding. Just knowing now what access the CRB members will have and in what ways and at what times to information that is currently not part of the public conversation is, I think, important to establishing the legitimacy of this group.
And do you foresee that that memorandum, because I feel like this has come up in a smaller conversation before, that that would be developed in partnership, that those two groups would come together to work through that MOU to understand, like, what is that data that we are going to be sharing? I mean, do you see that being a collaborative effort to create that document between the initial, maybe members of this board plus from some representation from our police department?
Yes, and having that conversation as part of an ongoing public engagement around this issue. How will the board do its work, I think, is important to start upfront with that conversation so that everybody knows, I think, in the spirit of transparency, what the city, right, to the extent that CPD is a city agency, is or isn't willing to put before the board for its contemplation when it does its oversight functions.
So I'm so glad that Adiola raised this, because there's, you know, even though we're meeting for over an hour and a half, it's still a lot to cover over a short period of time, there's a lot of balls in the air. But I firmly believe that, you know, there are sort of three measures of the city's commitment to this project. One, which we've talked a fair amount, is money. One, which we've talked some amount, but the shape of it, you know, remains to be determined, is sort of independence and authority. And one is, which we've talked about less, but I think it's critical, and Adiola's hitting squarely on the head, is transparency. And transparency depends upon disclosure and access. And so I think we do need a sense, a very firm sense of what that access looks like in the short term rather than the long term. There is, part of our charge is to develop an MOU with the department and with the chief. We've got an initial meeting or initial couple meetings set up for May to talk about that, but I very much believe that that's a process that can't just happen behind closed doors.
And those meetings currently are not public meetings.
Yes, and so I think there needs to be a public process by which the MOU is constructed as well.
So if we need to be thinking about that as a board for our term lengths, that needs to be something that happens in June?
Sort of public.
A public MOU discussion. So can you talk, can you be in touch with Chief Brackney about when that could happen?
Certainly.
Okay. Because, so to give people an understanding of what we've done on that front, we've researched MOUs in other agents, other communities, we've had conversations with the chief of police, we've started a draft based on the access to data and information that we think the CRB would need. And we have a meeting set up, two meetings set up currently with the police chief. But that is not, in the sense that that has not been a transparent process, that's been a process that has happened in meetings. Part of the difficulty is, you know, with a public board, you can't have more than two people in meetings. So we've had two people attend meetings, but I think that as we're getting toward the end of it, it's exactly right that that is a conversation that has to happen plain out in the open.
Harold Foley with the People's Coalition.
Harold Foley, I'm with the People's Coalition. So the data was already spoke of, so I don't need to talk about it anymore. It's been three police chiefs, and the data's still the same, right? And so, my concern is, if you don't fund it, it's gonna be a watered-down CRB, and it's not gonna be able to figure out what is actually going on, because we talk about transparency. I think without having the right tools to be successful, you just have another board like the Human Rights Commission, you have another board that's not really gonna be effective in the community. So I ask city council to look into really funding this, to make sure it is gonna be strong as it possibly can. Thank you.
I just want to briefly also thank Harold and those people who have been with us for practically every meeting this year, they deserve a big round of applause too, because, you know, they've been silent, were working very hard on this and thinking a lot about it.
All right, is anyone else that would like to have a conversation?
Thank you all for your, for your work.
Thank you.
And we'll be meeting again.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Pushing to adjourn?
Second.
All right, well, we, we're all, any discussion with the adjournment?
No.
All in favor, we out.
We're out.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Bye, see you later, good luck making it on time.